November 12th, 2013, at 6:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Bergman and remain standing for the invocation.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hands.
Let us pray and humble ourselves before Almighty God. Heavenly Father, you are the giver of all good things, human and divine. Father, we come before you to acknowledge that we need your help. We need your wisdom. We need your guidance. We come before you to ask this evening to open our minds and our hearts and our eyes and our hands so that we can better serve our community. Lord, we ask for your blessing upon this meeting this evening. Send your Holy Spirit to be with us, to guide us and to protect us and to build up a bond of friendship and camaraderie. Lord, we are so thankful for the gift to be able to live in a free country. Remind us always not to take that for granted. Lord, we thank you for our veterans that have served in our country. Father, we thank you for our city council and all the employees that work in this community to make it a better place to live and to serve you and to serve those amongst us. Lord, we ask that you would continue to protect us, provide for all of our needs, not only those needs of our finances in our city council, but also within our city and within our own individual families. Lord, always remind us to be wise in knowing that you've given us this responsibility and that we have a responsibility to treat your resources with respect and to share them. And most of all, Lord, we pray for those who aren't with us this evening, especially those families or those people in other parts of the world that have had devastation, especially in the Philippines right now. And for those who don't have anything to eat this evening, Lord, that you would watch over them and guide them and protect them. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I went to welcome you all to our city council meeting. Thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedule to be with us this evening. Roacho?
Here.
Bergman?
Here.
Mooneyham?
Here.
Jeff Rivero?
Here.
Joe Rivero?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
We have a forum. Approval of agenda as posted or as amended. This is a time for the city council or staff to remove items from the agenda or change the order of the agenda. Is there any person who wishes to change the order of the agenda? Councilman Jeff Rivero.
Just want to make a motion to remove item number... 14.
Where...
A second then.
Where are you going to move item 14, Mr. Rivero? To the beginning of...
Remove it in its entirety.
Oh, remove it? I'm sorry. I thought you said move it. My apologies. Okay, so we're going to... Are we postponing this, Mr. Rivero, to the next meeting? Because we do have Mrs. Machado in the audience who's here to speak on the carport issue.
Actually, I was going to have it removed and sent to the planning commission, or it was asked to be sent quite a long time ago. And from my understanding, it hasn't gone to planning commission yet. So, once the planning commission puts their information on it and recommendations, they'll send it back to us.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mooneyham?
Nothing, Mayor. I was simply going to point out, we do have someone here that wanted to speak on that item, but...
But I was... What I was going to do was after we deal with this motion, I was going to have her come up and state her concern.
She could still state her concern when it's open to you.
Right. That's what I thought.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to send this back to item 14, to send it back to the planning commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mooneyham. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is mayor or city attorney report out from closed session. There was no reportable action taken in closed session, and staff was given direction. The next thing we have on our agenda is the donation of the memory tree. So, I would like my ladies to come forward. If you want to get an item taken care of quickly, this is the group that you want to work with. Ladies, right over here, please. It was presented to me as a member of the Tree Partners that established a memory tree in the city of Atwater. We had a city Christmas tree for a number of years. It was over on Fifth Street, and then it was diseased and died. And so, then we have this vacant spot. So, now, my friend... Mary, thank you. Mary has... Well, Mary Pickford, you will start off and talk to us about the memory tree.
One of the special honors of belonging to a small community is that you can get a lot of things done in a short amount of time. With last Chamber of Commerce meeting, Leette Silvera from Heinz Hospice came and asked about a memory tree in Atwater, and she can explain that, too. With the help of the Atwater Women's Club, the Historical Society, Tree Partners, Chamber of Commerce, fabulous things have happened.
So, this would be our first annual Lights of Love tree. It's free and open to the public. If someone would like to sponsor a light on the tree, it's $10. And you don't actually get a light. You sponsor a light on the tree. You get a certificate with your loved one's name on it and a candle, and then we read their name at the ceremony. So, the purpose of this tree is to have a place where people can go any time of the year to remember, mourn, or just celebrate their loved one. So, I really appreciate everyone. Like she said a month ago, I went to a meeting and I said, "I need a tree. Can anybody help me with a tree in a spot?" And by 12 o'clock that same day, everybody came through. So, if you're interested, we do have flyers, and it's on our website. We are nonprofit, so everything goes towards Heinz Hospice and then our Center for Grief and Healing.
As president of Atwater Women's Club, we are requesting you to support planting a memory tree in Atwater along with other clubs and organizations in the community. The parking lot across from the VFW Hall had a tree, and this evergreen tree would be a replacement tree. The date is Tuesday, December 10th, at 6:00 PM, with a reception afterwards at the Atwater Women's Clubhouse. We invite all of you to attend.
We'd like you to please join us for desserts and cookies and goodies at the Women's Clubhouse after this event. Would you like to say?
No.
Okay. I'll give you that.
Candy Johnson, she's our gloss person, and so Historical Society, so she takes care of that along with Georgia Johnson. And like I said, this is the group that really... And Dr. Jim Williamson. Dr. Williamson was the one who was able to get the tree for us. And then we have Mr. Creighton in the back and Nick, who are helping us to make sure we got the right tree in the right spot. So, we just want to, on behalf of the city of Atwater, I just want to accept the tree and thank you ladies very, very much for your wonderful contribution to our community. And we can't thank you enough. Thank you very much. Notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that item is read, and then please come forward behind the podium. And you have three minutes. And we're going to start with Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott Phillips, 5676 Elliott Avenue. Madam American Member of the City Council, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Atwater Fire Cops for Kids, our toy drive. Normally, we do a tri-tip dinner dance. This year, we're doing something a little different. I'm going to see how this works out, but I think it'll work out great. It's a tri-tip. We're going to do a drive-through lunch/dinner, and we're going to cook up a whole tri-tip, firehouse beans, salads, and rolls. So, basically, a good dinner for at least a family of four, if not more. It'll be from noon to 4:00 to pick them up. And you can pick up at the station on Broadway, 699 Broadway, and it will be on December 7th. And all of our proceeds for this, just like the dinner dance, is going to go towards purchasing toys for the kids here in the city of Atwater for our annual toy drive. And tickets, we have them. They need to be pre-sale. We have to sell them in advance, so that way we make sure we get, you know, the right amount of food for everybody. I have tickets, Councilman Bergman. Any firefighter that works in the city, including our reserves, has tickets for this dinner. I know, I think Chaplain Larry Lee has some. So, you can see any of us. Contact the fire station. You can call my number, 769-7684. Give me a call. We'll make sure we get tickets out to you. And for all those, even if you're not able to purchase tri-tips or you're not into the tri-tip dinner thing, donations are always great, because if you can talk with Mr. Petro there, it's a rough every year trying to collect money and, you know, purchase enough toys for all these kids out there. I know the last couple of years have been a struggle. We've been able to do it, but it's getting harder and harder. So, we would appreciate everybody's support. And also, just like to throw out a special thank you to Atwater UPS Store. They're the ones that made up all the tickets for us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain Phillips. Next person?
I've got to sit down here. I just had surgery, so I've got to kind of sit down here. Down a little bit, maybe? Okay, this is just my concerns about...
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name and address, please?
Oh, Gary Gillard, 2509 Canal Drive, here in Atwater.
Thank you.
Okay. These are just concerns that I have about the carport issue that was going to be spoke about tonight by Scott, and I wish he had the opportunity to do that. I'm not real good at giving the details of everything that's going on or what this is, so I just wrote this out. I'd like to just read this of what all my comments are and what I... How I feel about the situation. So, if that would be okay, I'd like to do that.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I don't think it's fair that there is so many carports up all over town in worse condition than mine. I am in the process, was in the process of putting a carport up at my house, in the front. And I was stopped, and I was not aware of needing a permit. And further on down the line, you'll see why here. And I spent twice as much money to have this well-constructed and better-looking carport so that, you know, so that it would look and take... It would look better and better constructed than what you actually see in town today. And they're all over. So, I paid almost twice as much for it to make it that way. And it doesn't take away from the quality of the house, the neighborhood, and I got the same colors to match, so it would blend in. I had hired professionals to install it properly, so I wouldn't have a problem there. All other carports in town are positioned in the same manner, same location, as mine. There are no sides that would restrict visibility from any point of the carport, so it's safe as far as visibility. Not only that, I am not only... Not only that, I am not on the corner to obstruct any visibility from a corner, sight for vehicles or kids or anything like that. But yet, there is a carport in town on the corner of Third Street that has sides that does obstruct the view. That carport has been completed and is in use today, and it's, as far as I know, there's been no problems with it still up.
I'm going to have to have you sum it up, please.
Okay. Okay, I'll do that right quick then. I was stopped doing my carport because they said I needed a permit, which I did call planning to see about a permit. And the phone call said I did not need a permit. She did read me the... What it said in the code book, and all I really paid attention to was the fact I did not need a permit. So, I tried to do this from the very beginning to get it done properly and well-constructed, and shouldn't be any problems. That's three minutes?
That's three minutes, yes.
Goodness. That's quick.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening.
And we will be bringing this back again to the city, the planning commission, and they meet on the, what, the second? Which... When's the next one? Tomorrow is the next meeting, but I'm sure this will be on the next... Won't be tomorrow's meeting, no. So, we will be bringing it back to the planning commission and then bringing it back up here. And I know... So, thank you for coming. I know it was a great effort for you to come.
It was, yes.
And we appreciate it so much. And I have Mrs. Machado that would like to speak.
I have one question for the gentleman.
Yes.
You said you contacted the city and they told you you didn't need one. Who contacted you originally? Who contacted you originally saying you needed one?
I had... During the construction of it, when I started having it constructed, Mark come out and told me that someone had called.
Okay. I was just trying to...
Yeah, that's where it comes from.
Thank you very much, sir.
But I had tried. I mean, I tried to do this properly, like it should have been done.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Joanne Machado, and I live on Canal Drive, just a couple of doors down from Mr. Gillard. And while I was not the one that called to ask about the carport, I would have had I seen it early enough. I want to say now that I do not speak for the neighborhood. I only speak for myself, although I have spoken with several people within the neighborhood. And our biggest concern is the size and shape of the carport. It is very large. It's a full three-car carport. It goes all the way out to the sidewalk. It's huge. It's very commercial-looking, very agricultural-looking. It doesn't look like anything I want next door to me or in my neighborhood, and I would like to hope that you would feel the same way. My concern is that the city doesn't have, may not, I don't know for sure, a code that regulates metal carport construction. And if we don't, maybe it's time that we do. I do know that the city of Merced does not allow any metal carports to be constructed, and maybe we should follow suit with that city. And maybe it would eliminate something like this happening in the future, regulate the size, shape, color, location. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
We appreciate you taking the time and effort to come down and to speak on this matter, and we thank you very, very much. Do anyone else in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak who's not on the How are the Norises today? Good to see you. Thank you for coming. Oops. Oops, going the wrong way. Let me introduce you to Mrs. Norris, and we have a young man in the back there. That's her young son and her husband. We appreciate you all coming today.
Hello. I'm sorry, I'm a little stage shy here, but I felt that this was very important. And first of all, I'd like to say to all of you, thank you for making me feel welcome. My name is Viviana Norris, and I live at 2776 Crest. As you can see, I have just graduated on Saturday and got my new partner in crime, Hoagie. He's a yellow lab and golden retriever cross. I'm very excited for our new life, and it's a lot of change for all of our family, but being in this community has helped me build my confidence and be able to be steady and be able to be stable as well, enough to where I would feel comfortable training for a dog. And although this is a wonderful thing, sometimes it's very dangerous out in the public, and that's what I've come to address, is the... Just the abundance of stray dogs and cats. He's very well-trained, Hoagie is, and he is providing me guide work service. And it's a little bit hard to do that with, you know, dogs and cats running around loose. And I've tried calling Animal Control, and all they can tell me is, "Well, you can catch them in your backyard and hold them for me." I would love to do that, but number one, I don't know what kind of diseases they have. Number two, I can't see to describe if something happened to me, what color the dog was, and I don't feel safe doing that. And I was wondering if something can be done about it, maybe a different approach. I am not really sure how anyone could go about this, but I... On my street alone, there are dogs who are stray and cats, and there are some people who also let their dogs out in the afternoons and at night. And while Hoagie's guiding me, they can distract him, or he can get in dogfights, and then I will have no partner in crime. So, if at all possible, maybe that could be taken into consideration. And I appreciate you for making this my home in the last 15 years. Everyone has been so wonderful to me, my son, and my husband. I love Atwater.
Thank you. Just stay right there. I think the city manager has answers to our questions.
Lieutenant Joseph, can you make contact with this family, please, and take care of the issue tomorrow?
Definitely.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Can you also help her down?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
She just was telling me that if you want to stop and visit with her, she will be more than glad to educate you on her guide dog and she answers any questions that you would have.
And she will answer them.
Yes.
She comes to our traffic commission meetings quite often.
Yes. Yes, she will answer them. So, we appreciate you taking time and effort to come to our meeting. So, thank you very, very much.
I appreciate the hour of light as well. It's been wonderful and helps fill up my throat when I cross the travel section.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, we're still on items from the public. Is there any other persons who would like to speak? Please come forward to our podium. Seeing none, then we'll move to the next item, and that's our consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Councilpersons, is there any item on the consent calendar that you'd like to have polled for separate action? So, if there's none, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Bergman to accept the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Seconded the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Jeff Rivero. Any further discussion? Call for the question. Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Councilman Jeff Rivero.
Yes, can we ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak on the Cops for Kids or the Chamber of Commerce Christmas parades?
Well, I think we have the Chamber of Commerce right in front of us. Connie, please, just go right over to the microphone, please.
I am Connie Hunter, president of the Atwater Chamber of Commerce and mayor in distinguished council. I come before you for the Christmas parade approval, and it looks like on item seven, you have pretty much laid down the route for the parade. And there will also be Santa, will bring up the rear of the parade and receive the public in the BBVA bank, banking lot there. And that's assisted by the fire department as well as ourselves. And I'm also asking, could we have a food concession in that lot on that night? We had one last year, and it served the public. And I guess that's about, sums it up. I don't want to take any more of your time.
We appreciate... Any questions of the council of Connie Hunter? I just want to thank Connie very, very much for putting this on. This is really a major event. She's got... She does the Fall Festival, then they move right into the Christmas parade, and it's one of the few Christmas parades that I know of that is at night, and so that's a major thing in itself. Connie, on behalf of the council, we just want to thank you very much for... Connie, on behalf of the council, we just want to thank you very much for all of your efforts. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to the directors of the chamber. Thank you.
Public hearings, number eight. We're waiving the first reading of the, and introducing ordinance number CS947, temporarily amending the ordinance number CES824 and number CS945 to reduce the amount of public facility and improvement fees and a charge for new residential development and possibly creating a cap on the number of new units. Mr. McBride.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. Thank you for your opportunity tonight to discuss this. As you know, at the last meeting, we discussed this issue. Direction was provided to come back with you for an item for your consideration. We have prepared the public hearing notice pursuant to law. We've provided some outreach to interested parties that were involved with the first time. You took this issue under consideration. We reached out to Evolve Construction, Ramsay Piro, and also Steiner Development. Essentially, what we provided for you is a shell that you can work on tonight. If you wanted to make changes to have a specific cap as to the number of units, it allows for that to be inserted into the ordinance shell. It was some very creative thinking on behalf of the city attorney's office to come up with the shell for you. Essentially, all that we're doing is asking to have the program that was set up pursuant to CS945 extended out for additional six months to June 30th of 2014. The only other changes would be, should the council want to have a cap? And that was an issue that was discussed, and so we created it for your consideration if you wanted to do that. If you have more specific questions about anything that you've seen in the ordinance, we'd be happy to answer your questions, but I just want to provide a general overview and then be prepared to answer your questions if you have any.
Are you, are you ready for us to open up the public hearing, or do you want to go through the overview?
It's up to you, Mayor. We can open the hearing now if you like.
Okay, whatever, whatever's the, if you're, if you're ready for the public hearing, then we can go ahead and have it and then finish off afterwards. Is that appropriate?
That'd be appropriate, yes, thank you.
We'd like to open up the public hearing. This is the time in which you may come forward and testify either for or against this item. Please come to the podium, and you have three minutes to testify. And with that, is there anyone in the public who wishes to come forward and talk about the ordinance, the temporarily amending the ordinance in reducing the amount of public facility and improvement fees? Anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and discuss this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais, and we'll let Mr. McBride continue with his presentation.
Mayor, honestly, I didn't have anything else to add. I just wanted to answer any questions that you might have. I just want to reemphasize the point that the proposed ordinance for you isn't doing anything different than the one that you previously adopted that's setting, expires at the end of the year. All that we're doing is creating an opportunity, should the council want to take action on this ordinance, to have a certain number of units as a cap, that you can include that in it. We're suggesting that perhaps you look at extending this until the date of June 30th, 2014. Obviously, the council could make other decisions, such as you don't want to continue the program and let it expire. That's obviously a choice you have as well. That's really all that I had for you tonight.
Councilpersons, is there, Councilman Jeff Rivero?
I was going to ask Mr. Terpstra, is it possible to put a cap on it at 30? And if someone wanted to reapply for more after the 30, that we put an ordinance where they would have to come back to the council individually and ask for an extension or an increase?
Well, yeah, I think the answer is yes. If the council desired to put a hard cap of 30, 50, 100, whatever the number is, and then thereafter, anybody seeking a partial reduction under this ordinance would have to come to the council with a specific request, that could be included in the ordinance.
Because I do like the idea of trying to stimulate growth in our, our city building, but at the same time, I don't want to expose the city to somebody pulling a huge amount of permits out. So like I said last time this approached us, I'd like to put a cap on it at least 30, and that if somebody needed to pull more papers than that, then come and explain to us exactly how they're going to get that many homes built in a year. Because I think 30 homes in a year, that's pushing it. So anything more than that would, I see the city exposing itself to somebody maybe just putting down some cement or maybe even putting down sewer pipes and saying that that's progress enough for them to be able to qualify for the program. If they're going to build, I don't have a problem with it, and I don't see somebody building more than 30 homes in a year, so that's why I personally would like to have it at 30.
Any other councilpersons who wish to comment on this? Councilman Munningham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am absolutely in favor of this. As you well know, there is a extreme housing shortage throughout the Central Valley, and there are builders who are now just starting to dip their toe back in the waters to get back into the building process. The margins are starting to get there with the valuations increasing. However, as demonstrated by a number of central California communities acting in a similar manner by decreasing their impact fees and their permitting fees, they are attempting to make it a little bit more attractive. I certainly wouldn't want to put up any barriers to entry as a hard cap on a number of permits they can pull. I believe that the builders that Mr. McBride is working with currently are responsible, and they certainly know their business. And I think that if they were to put up a large subdivision proposal, as well as looking attractive from a, from a cost perspective, I certainly wouldn't want to put up any other caveats or barriers for them to think about building in Atwater. So I would support the, I would support this ordinance as presented. Thank you.
Is there any other councilpersons who wish to make comments on this item? Councilman Jeff Rivero?
I would like to make a motion to move forward with the ordinance provided for us, with the exception of having a 30-unit minimum, or excuse me, maximum, and that if a builder wants to add more than 30 units, that they would reapproach the council for approval.
Okay. Is that correct, city attorney? Is that...
Well, I think, but maybe before a second is offered or not offered, are you referring to 30 per builder, or are you referring to 30 total units under this program?
30 per builder.
Per builder.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We could bring back conforming amendments if that was the direction the council wanted to go for second reading.
We thought that you might want to have a general cap in the community, a total cap, and that's the way it was crafted, where you could set up, like, let's say, no more than 90 units. But if you want it for a specific builder, we will have to recraft it a little bit and bring it back.
And we could, but again, until the motion has a second, let's see where we go with that. Okay, then staff, then to just clarify, staff will go back. This, this will be considered its first reading and introduction under those, under that scenario. We will bring back the conforming changes for second reading and adoption so that we can move the program along.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. We ready for the question? Call for the question. Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Joe Rivero?
No.
Bergman?
Yes.
Munningham?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so we're moving then down to item number nine, waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance number CS946, repealing and reenacting Title 15, Building and Construction of the Atwater Municipal Code. Chief Building Official, Pareda.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mark Pareda, Chief Building Official. And tonight is the culmination of the triannual building code adoption. So it's basically really, to the cut short of it, every three years, California adopts codes, building codes, everything from the California Building Code, mechanical code, plumbing code. Now we have the Green Code, fire codes, and so forth. And come January 1st, 2014, those codes are going to be enacted, and with your adoption tonight, it'll make sure that that happens with the city of Atwater, so.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Pareda before we open up the public hearing? I'll open up the public hearing. Now is the time that persons may come forward and give testimony either for or against ordinance number CS946. So anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais, and do we have any more questions of Mr. Pareda? Are we ready, gentlemen, to move on for a motion? Mr. Bergman, Councilman Bergman?
Move to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Move to approve staff's recommendation as presented. Do, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Munningham. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the question. Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Munningham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pareda. Appreciate it. Okay, item number 10, city manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Financial update, fiscal year ending, ended June 30, 2013, and fiscal year 2013-14 as of October 31. We have city manager Petro and our financial advisor, Zanoni. Mr. Zanoni making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, as promised to you in the past, we're going to be giving you a quarterly report in regard to the current budget. Mr. Zanoni will also be giving you a fiscal update ending June 30, 2013. I'd like the council to take into consideration and keep in mind that the revenues appear to be a little low at this time. We're still collecting on business licenses that we haven't collected for in a while, and we have some accounts receivable that we're still in the process of collecting. So I will turn it over to Mr. Zanoni, our financial consultant. Thanks, Bill.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'm Bill Zanoni with Municipal Resource Group. What I would like to do this evening is provide you an update on the city's financial, preliminary financial status as of the end of the last fiscal year, and give you an update on where we are right now after the first third of the current fiscal year. We're going to just give you a brief overview. We'll talk about fiscal year 12-13, 13-14, and then, and then just wrap up with discussing some of the challenges that the city is facing and will continue to face as we go forward. The, the city of Atwater, like most every city in this state and every other state, has been significantly impacted by the economic downturn over the past several years. The city of Atwater experienced a significant reduction in revenues. Over the last several years, the, the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city, as well as two of the three enterprise funds, the, the water fund and the sanitation fund, operated in a, in a deficit position with expenditures exceeding revenues. And as a result of that, reserves in those funds have been depleted and in fact have gone negative. And, and this is something that you discussed several times last fiscal year. You discussed it during the 12-13 budget process. In fact, you even delayed adoption of the budget for last, for the 12-13 fiscal year while you identified measures to reduce that, that operating shortfall. The, the good news is that the budget that you adopted for, for 13-14 is a balanced budget, so I think what we'll see here in a few minutes is you'll, you will start to see that the, the city, things have begun to turn around, although there's a, a long ways to go. The 12-13 budget was adopted in February. That's about eight months into the fiscal year. But again, as I said, you delayed approving a budget until you had a, a pretty good handle on, on projected revenues and expenditures. We have, we've preliminarily closed the fiscal year. The year ends June 30th. The city of Atwater has a 60-day accrual period, so for the months, even though we closed the year in June, for the months of July and August, we're still receiving revenue for last year, and we're still paying bills for last year. So it's really not until September that we, we close the books. The, the staff, the limited staff in the finance department has been working long and hard the last month or so, two months really, to get the, the books ready for the auditors. The audit is underway. The auditors have been here, they've done their fieldwork. We're in the process now of responding to questions. So the information that I'm going to present to you this evening is preliminary for 12-13. It could be changed as the auditors make their final adjustments, but there shouldn't be any, any, anything significant. The 13-14 budget was adopted on June 24th. That was a balanced budget. That's a significant achievement for this city. The general fund and the enterprise funds that have been negative were, were balanced. And the other, the other item that the council discussed during the budget deliberation process and directed staff was to return on a regular basis to provide updates on the budget, so that if something were to change with revenues or expenditures, you'd have time to react, take the whatever corrective action is necessary. The information that you're going to be seeing, seeing this evening was presented to the Audit and Finance Committee at their meeting last month on October 21st. So just to give you a quick, quick recap on where the, where the general fund revenue comes from, and again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city for general activities. About 246 percent, almost half of general fund revenues comes from property tax and sales tax, and those are two sources of revenue that were significantly impacted in this city from the economic downturn. Intergovernmental, 23 percent is the next highest source of revenue, and that's vehicle license fees. But almost half of the city's revenue comes from property tax and sales tax. For general fund expenditures, about 63 percent, or almost two-thirds of general fund expenditures are for public safety, police and fire. And the next largest category is parks and community services at 10 percent. The general fund, as I stated a minute ago, operated in a deficit position for the last several years, and when, when the dark line being zero, when, when the general fund operates in a deficit position, is it, it is drawing down reserves. General fund reserves went from a positive balance of $5.8 million in 2006 to a negative $3.9 million balance as of the last audit, which is June 30th. $3.9 million balance as of the last audit, which is June 30, 2012. So preliminary information for the 12-13 fiscal year, the budget that was adopted last February anticipated a shortfall of $910,000. That's significantly better than the shortfall that you experienced in fiscal year 10-11, when General Fund expenditures exceeded revenues by 3.6 million. So the efforts that the council took and that staff cooperated with in cutting operating costs and reducing salaries and benefits significantly reduced the gap between General Fund revenues and expenditures. Preliminary information at this point indicates that our revenues last fiscal year were about $200,000 more than what we budgeted. And General Fund expenditures were 1.8 million less than expenditures. But that number is somewhat misleading. The reason that the General Fund under-expended by 1.8 million dollars is that we, the city did not last year make the contract payment to Cal Fire. So that payment was deferred to this fiscal year. That's about 1.9 million dollars. So what we initially show right now is that the General Fund ended the year with a 1.1 million dollar surplus. If we back out the 1.9 million dollar payment to Cal Fire, we pretty much ended the year just where we thought we would be with about an $840,000 shortfall. For General Fund revenues, revenue from property tax, business license tax, and miscellaneous revenue exceeded the budget. That miscellaneous revenue includes some one-time energy rebates that the city got from PG&E of about $243,000, and a one-time redevelopment successor agency payment to the General Fund of $107,000. Those additional revenues were partially offset by slightly less than projected revenue from sales tax, franchise fees, impound fees, vehicle impound fees, and false alarm fees. But overall, General Fund revenues ended the year $239,000 higher than what was budgeted. Again, the budget anticipated a shortfall last year of $910,000. Our actual surplus was 1.1. We're working with the auditors right now on how to report the Cal Fire deferred payment. But if we take that into account, we ended the year with a shortfall of $842,000 compared to the budgeted shortfall of 910, so within about $60,000 of what we budgeted. I also wanted to touch on some of the other significant funds, and those would be the enterprise funds. The Water Enterprise Fund last year had a budgeted shortfall of $98,000 based upon revenues and expenditures in that fund. The Water Fund last year actually ended the year with a shortfall of about $568,000. City Council approved rate adjustments for the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sanitation Fund. So you'll, you'll see here in a minute, the revenues for last fiscal year reflect only several months of collections under the new rate structure. Sewer Enterprise Fund actually ended the year-
Excuse me, Mr. Zanoni?
Yes, ma'am.
Joe, Councilman Joe Rivera?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, could you go back to the last?
This one?
There it is, right there, the expenditures that increased. What was the large increase of expenditures?
That was for, for capital, capital expenditures. And I don't have the detail, but I can get that for you.
Is some of that, a portion of just placing in the capital reserves?
No, this was actually expended.
It's actually expended, okay. Thank you.
Sewer Enterprise Fund actually ended the year about 1.1 million dollars better than it had anticipated. We had budgeted a surplus of 1.5 million. Sewer Fund ended the year with expenditures about 1.1 million dollars of less than budgeted expenditures, and so those funds stay in the fund balance of the Sewer Fund. And the third enterprise is the Sanitation Fund. And again, the council approved a rate adjustment for the Sanitation Fund. That fund budgeted a shortfall of 700,000 and came in just slightly, slightly off from that. But again, revenues did not cover expenditures in the Sanitation Fund last year. What I'm going to present to you now is for third, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Joe?
Just going back, yeah, thank you. Under the agreement with the sanitation company, we had a larger amount of funds that came in over a short period of time. Is that showing on there? Why is it still showing the same as previous year? I would think that-
Is that, that the one-time-
Yeah, the one-time.
Prepayment, that shows up as revenue. That's in revenue.
But even with that, it stays the same as the year, previous year, and that's-
Was that the franchise?
No, fund.
I think it was, I believe it was a franchise payment that, that went into the, the franchise revenue goes to the General Fund.
Okay, so-
That was budgeted, and it was budgeted in the General Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Fiscal year 13-14, departments are going to shortly be going through, working on reviewing the projected revenues for this fiscal year and reviewing their expenditures to date and their projections for the rest of the fiscal year as we get ready for the mid-year budget review that'll be coming to you in February. But as of the end of October, so four months into the fiscal year, we're one-third of the way through the year. General Fund revenues total 1.7 million, expenditures are 3.1 million. This, this is really nothing to be concerned about. We, the city, General Fund receives the major portion of our revenues, our single source, largest source of revenue is property tax revenue. We don't get that first payment until January. So we get about half of our tax revenue in January. We get another big payment in, it's collected in April. We get it, the city gets it in May, and then we get a cleanup payment in June. Sales tax is, again, the second largest source of revenue. There's a two-month lag between when sales tax is collected and when the city receives it. So as of the end of October, we had received sales tax revenue for July and August, only two months' worth. So it's not, it's not unusual that a third of the way through the year, we've only received 14 percent of our budgeted revenue. Expenditures, a third of the way through the year are at 26.3 percent. So right, as of right now, the departments are all operating within their approved budget. There's no, there's nothing that we have to report to you this evening on expenditures that's of any, of any concern. The good news is for the enterprise funds. As of the end of October, the Water Enterprise Fund had revenues that had exceeded expenditures. Again, this is only part of the way through the year, and we haven't, we have not incurred all of our expenses yet, but it appears that revenues are coming in on, as was budgeted. And hopefully, and it looks like the Water Enterprise Fund will not end the year in a deficit position. Sewer Enterprise Fund continues to cover its costs with revenues, and so far this year, the Sanitation Fund is operating with revenues covering its costs. So we'll, we'll have better information when we get halfway through the year, when we come to you in February with the mid-year budget review. But at this point, it looks like the rate adjustments that you, that you approved are generating the revenue that they were anticipated to generate. The other significant item in the budget is Measure H. That's the half-cent sales tax that went into effect on July 1 to fund public safety costs. The projected revenue for this fiscal year was 1.3 million dollars. To date, the city has received two payments, July and August, and those two payments were each $162,000. So the city has received $324,000 of Measure H revenue so far this year. That money goes into a Measure H fund, and then a portion of it is, will be transferred to the General Fund, consistent with the budget that you adopted for public safety costs. City works with Muni Services as a sales tax consultant that does the city's sales tax projections. They are reviewing right now the revenue projections for Measure H revenue. And again, when we come back to you in a couple of months, hopefully, we'll be able to report that this Measure H revenue will be higher than the budgeted amount of 1.3 million dollars. So that's, that's the good news. The challenge is that the city continues to face is that the General Fund has a negative, negative fund balance or negative reserves. You reduced last year your, your operating shortfall from $3.5 million the year before to about a little bit less than a million. But there is, it is still negative, and there are no General Fund reserves, and that's an issue that's going to have to be addressed. Those General Fund reserves are going to have to be built, rebuilt back up. And as we discussed when you reviewed the budget in June, we should have a positive reserve balance of close to $2 million, just as a percentage of, of the budget. So that's, that's a goal and a, something that we're going to have to strive for and identify ways to achieve, to achieve that additional revenue. COPS grant, the budget assumed $342,000 of revenue this year to the General Fund for the COPS grant. The city received a COPS grant of $369,000, but that's going to be paid over three years. So we have a shortfall of about $200,000. Working right now to identify how that, how that will be addressed. I think there are ways. Frank's City Manager is, we're looking within the Police Department budget and staffing of how we, how we can address that shortfall, but we are not, our revenues for the COPS grant are significantly less than what was, what was budgeted. The negative balance in the other funds, the Water Fund and the Sanitation Fund, while those funds now are generating revenue, it's going to be several years at least before those negative fund balances are restored to a positive position. What's going to be critical as we move through this year, again, into next year, and as you start your deliberations on the next fiscal year budget, is that revenues and expenditures be closely monitored. And I think what we would continue to do is use the Audit and Finance Committee as a sounding board for any issues that come up, and then bring, bring back to council on a regular basis, updates, so everyone is well informed on where the city is. The next update would be in February. There'd be two items that'll be coming to you in February. One is the audited financial statements for last fiscal year. Those will have final figures in them. They'll have final fund balances for all of the city's funds. And the 13-14 mid-year budget review. And as a part of the mid-year budget review, you will be receiving a resolution to make whatever adjustments that might need to be made to the budget, and also a resolution to identify and record these inter-fund loans that have gone on for the last couple of years. So be documenting those inter-fund loans so that as they're repaid, there's a trail of it. And then the third item that you'll be discussing at mid-year will be financial policies. One of the financial policies that we would present to you is a, a policy on how to handle inter-fund loans in the future, so that if there is a need for a loan between two funds in the city, there's a process to follow that's documented and that the council is aware of it and approves it. And that's the end of my presentation.
Mr. Mooneyham, Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Bill, fantastic job. I think your professionalism shines in every report you give, and we really appreciate all your work that you and your staff have put forward on this. I know you are drastically understaffed. My first question, Mayor, would be directed at a city clerk. Gina, do you know where we're at as far as the, I think there's a part-time account clerk that we're trying to bring onboard currently?
We're in the screening process right now. It's closed.
Okay, great. Second question would be, while I'm cautiously optimistic about property tax increases through rising valuations of our homes, have we looked at the possibility of charging for our code enforcement as a new revenue stream? Not that we should utilize that as a revenue stream, per se, but there are numerous communities in the valley that obviously give ample timeframe to correct violations, but sooner or later, there has to be a hammer to get people to come into compliance. And I was just wondering if we'd looked at that as a potential for tapping into potential new revenue?
City Manager?
That's not anything that we have, we have not done that yet, but that's, this is the, this is the perfect time to discuss it, and we can do our homework and come back to you at mid-year with options.
I don't anticipate that it would be a, a large revenue stream, per se, but at this point, anything that we could examine would be beneficial, so.
One, one thing that I did forget to mention was, and I think City Manager mentioned it at the beginning, business license revenue. We have been aggressively pursuing collection of business license revenue. Last year, revenue from business licenses was, I believe, $106,000. As of today, we've collected $194,000 of business license revenue. So what the staff has been, has been doing is aggressively, politely but aggressively following up on those businesses. We've had, there have been a number of businesses in this city that have been operating for multiple years without paying the business license tax. And they have now paid and, in fact, have been back-billed three years, which is as far back as the city can go. As of, as of today, business license collections are almost 200,000, and we think by the time we come back to you, we should be over $200,000 in revenue this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Wasn't there a time in which we had talked about reviewing our ordinances and reviewing our, the different code enforcement and penalties that we had? And we were going to use a lady, a person that could go before a committee and some, you know, a follow-up on some, like the graffiti and some of those things that cost the city money, but, and we're not getting our money back for them?
Yeah, we currently have a hearing officer that we put on, on contract several months ago, and the code enforcement officer is writing citations, and it's going to be, to be processed through our new hearing officer. We might want to look at the fines. The fines are very little, limited, and I'll take the mayor pro tem's suggestion, and we'll look into that.
Right, because I think that would be an area that we need to work on. Any other questions of Mr. Zanoni? I just want to compliment you on, job well done. And let me ask you a question now. In February, are we starting the new budget? Are we starting to develop the budget in February?
We will probably actually start the budget process in January.
January?
At a staff level, staff will start to begin reviewing revenues and identifying expenditures. But in February, what you will, what you will see is adjust, update halfway through the, this fiscal year, and at that point, we'll also identify for you anything that we were aware of that might be of significance for next fiscal year.
And I think that just those three other items you talked about, the one was the policy, and I think that's- policy, and I think that's something that we as a council need to work on, is developing policy for, so for future council persons and future councils, so that we can make sure that we're monitoring the fiscal happenings that are happening within our, our, our business. I think we've kind of gone along too long and kind of hoping that people were taking care of it for us, and they were not, and I think we need to have a better understanding and a better knowledge of where we are at, at each month, so we know where our revenue is versus our expenditures, and have some kind of a, that we can, we as a council can check to see what's happening. Any other comments? City Manager, do you have any comments?
No, I do not. Thank you, Bill.
So thank you very much. Appreciate your, I'll entertain a motion to approve the staff's recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mooneyham.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bergman. Any further discussion? Call for the question.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11, amending the Classification Plan and Salary Schedule A13 effective July 1. In 2013, I'm going to give this to the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, before you tonight is amending a classification plan, and it'll only be for one. I am pulling the, the last two on page two of your staff report. I'm pulling those off the agenda at this point in time. So what, what we're proposing tonight is after, the after-school program through the Atwater Elementary School District and the City of Atwater entered into a joint agreement, which is a grant, to provide school services, and these are overseen by our, our city, but the funding is through the Atwater Elementary School District, which is through one of their grants. We want to keep the salaries in line and keep the job descriptions consistent throughout the entire Atwater Elementary School District staff, and we recommend adding the classifications and associated pay scale for each position to match the ASD district. There'd be no physical impact related to the after-school program salaries due to the ASED grant funding, and all wages and benefits are 100%, and I underline that, 100% reimbursable. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Judy, did you have a, okay, thank you. Do you have any questions of the City Manager? Joe, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had, what, which two were you pulling off, you said?
We're pulling off the, the other two job descriptions on page two.
The after-school program leader and the chief building.
Yeah, we're leaving, we're leaving the after-school program. That's, I'm requesting you to adopt that, but we're pulling off the chief buildings and the public works director on the last page two of the staff report. We're just focusing on the after-school program at this time.
After-school program, okay. We, so the, the motion would be to approve the after-school program and to defer the, the other two items at this time?
At this time, correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I make, I'll make that motion that we approve the after-school program and defer the other two items at this time.
Second the motion.
Is there any other questions on that one? Call for the question.
Joe Rivero?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivero?
Yes.
Phoebe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is reports and presentations. We're going to have item number 12 as update on the old Creamery Building, and we have Mr. McBride is going to work with, and we have the, Pastor Juan, and Pastor Juan from the, the church, he's here to help us with this presentation.
Mayor, and also the building official, Mark Paredes, here. I was going to have him speak on behalf of some of the things that he's done to help expedite the project and also save them considerable amounts of money so they can get closer to the goal of building this, this church in the community. He didn't know that, but I put him on the spot a little bit tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. You were asked, you had asked for us to put together some information for you, and so we tried to provide a little bit of background about what has been occurring with the Creamery It's important to realize that the Planning Commission did have opportunity to review an application, because it was converting in a residential transition to a, a use that was for assembly uses in the, in the church, it required a conditional use permit, and so that was approved by the commission on June 12, 2013. The church has actually been working with us for much longer than that to get this project going, been talking to the Pentecostal Church Group out of Fresno about their plans, about how this is going to work. I think we've developed a very good working relationship with them. They obviously understand it's, it's a big massive project. When you're undertaking these types of rehabilitation projects, there are always some unforeseen issues from the beginning, things you have to address. On their behalf, they have had a numerous amount of volunteer help to do cleanup and other work, to help kind of stabilize the area, and I just would hope everyone recognizes that what you see today is still a work in progress, it is not the final, it is not the end, this is still the beginning. What we provided for you in your agenda report is, as I, as I mentioned, kind of an overview, but we wanted to provide a copy of the detailed explanation of what they intend to do with the facilities. Their designer and architect, Chuck Ware, did a great job explaining how this is going to work, talking about the main issues with it, and they also provided some elevations, which I'd be happy to show a few of them, just to kind of give the public who isn't maybe familiar with it a sense of what it's going to be looking like. So what you see here, this exhibited, the top pieces are the, the side elevations, more or less what you see from Atwater Boulevard and from Broadway, and the lower portion are what you would see from Castle Street and from the adjacent property. Obviously, there's not a lot you can do to change some pieces of this large structure, but they are looking to add primarily in this area. You get a real sense now that it does look like a church, it has some of the features you would associate with the church.
Now that app, that opened, that is, goes out to Castle or goes out to Broadway?
It's the opposite side. It actually faces the interior property adjacent to it. That's where you have some roll-up doors today, and primarily where the main access is to the building. This would be the side that you see from Castle Street here.
Thank you.
And then these two, and I can't read them from where I am, these would be the sides. It would either be Atwater Boulevard or from, I believe this is Atwater Boulevard, this would be Broadway. Interior, on the interior is really where all the main work is going to be done. I'm going to put this up, but I know you're not going to be able to see it. Just to kind of give you a sense of some of it, what you see here in this area, these are all restroom facilities. This is the main open area through here. This here would be your entryway that you saw on the other elevation, and obviously there's room adjacent to the main assembly hall for a variety of different uses through here and through here. If you haven't been in the Creamery Building before, it's kind of set up into thirds. You've got a, you've got a portion here, the main assembly area and a portion here, and they're kind of keeping that intact and taking advantage of the natural openness of the building to make this work for, for the project. They have been required and they have some prepared and submitted detailed plans that have to be reviewed by engineers, by our group that does our plant checking for us. There was some concerns about the structural load, whether or not the structure can hold sprinkler suppression systems, dealing with seismic issues. There was an attempt made to do some x-raying to kind of look at the structural numbers and come up with an estimate of what the values of the load could be. That's being resolved, but we've made great progress in that aspect. There were other issues. We provided for your information, a detailed list of all the different items that were on the correction list. Obviously, the plant checking is, you can see in the reports prepared by Golden Valley Engineering. The two things I wanted to have Mark get up and talk about was the Title 24 issue and what we did to help resolve that. We were able to make some changes that saved them considerable money to help them get this project on, going.
A few months ago, the lead designer, Chuck Ware, approached me, and he had some real concerns of hitting the new California energy requirements, the title, what we call Title 24 energy requirements. With a concrete-style building, the heat would basically, is obviously going to heat the concrete on the outside of the building, and that's going to start stemming through the walls and into the structure itself. Some of the latitudes that we used to enjoy in California are no longer present. There was, for them, in order to hit today's qualifying numbers for the Title 24 threshold and for the energy code, was going to be a substantial cost, in upwards of about 80,000 dollars, around 79,000 dollars for some specific type of insulation that they're going to have to do to their walls. I worked with Chuck along with a gentleman with the Energy Control Board, one of the commissioners there. We managed to help them out and lead them through the process for what we call a hardship. So the City of Atwater has taken on a hardship, or allowed them to take a hardship on this, and has, and in fact has lowered their costs as far as their insulation is going for a 79,000 dollar savings in order to keep this project moving. Without that, it would have substantially stalled the project, possibly would have, possibly even killed the project. So we've been working hand-in-hand with Pastor Juan and Chuck. It's a great project, it is a substantial structure, it's an old structure. It's going for a different use, completely different use than what it was originally meant, meant for. Mr. McBride is absolutely correct about the x-rays going in, but that had to be done to make sure that this, it is a 50-year-old building and a concrete building like that. You've got stresses over 50 years, seismic loads and calculations between what was done 50 years ago, which didn't exist that much compared to what we have today, is a lot more stringent. So we're trying to communicate, get, the technology from 50 years ago today, trying to coincide with today's numbers. And so that's what they've been busily doing. Mr. Ware, along with his engineer, along with my plant check engineer, have all meeting, and they're developing some numbers that everything is, looks like it's going to be fine, and the calculations are going to be rolling out soon. So as far as a construction or a plan review and stuff where there's monumental tasks that we've got to get through on this, to make sure that we're going to be putting, or they're going to be putting anywhere from 200 to 400 people, women and children there, we're not going to get a second chance of something bad worse to happen in there. So we've got to make sure people get in, they can get out. So that's, that's the reason why we're doing what we're doing. Mr. Ware's been excellent to work with. Pastor Juan, I have to credit him and his, the people that attend his church, they have cleaned up the site a lot better than all of us remember it. They even put a little coat of paint on the outside to kind of get rid of some of the, the tagging that had taken place over the years and stuff like that, and they've been very proactive out there. We had a, a reason of concern that there might be people out there, living out there, while they're actually using their, their people from their parish to stay there at the night to stop theft. We've had a compressor stole, from what I understand, tons or of metal, if I remember right, off that site, and this is all something that they were going to take this metal in, make the money, help pay their bills that they're doing, and construction costs and different things. So it's only right that they be able to have somebody out there to watch their stuff, and since they've had somebody out there taking care of that, from what I understand, they're, they haven't had any problem with any theft, so.
Again, just as a reminder to the council and public, what you see is still work in progress, it's the beginning, it's not the end. We are being very cooperative, doing everything that we can to help expedite it and work with our limited staff and resources, obviously. I think the intent has been to get a project that works, where it's, it works for the community, it works for the specific neighborhood. I think in the end, it's going to be a much enhanced benefit to the neighborhood than what we've had there for many, many years. I know Pastor Juan wants to speak on behalf of his congregation, what he's doing. I'd just also like to advise the council that even though we, we are very cooperative and we're very open about this, we are making sure that they're doing what's required by law, and that we are making sure that they're not doing more than they can without having permits in hand. I know Mrs. Bowling is here, I reached out to her last week, explained to her the issues. I also provided her the same detail packet you have tonight. She actually has better drawings than, than we do, and trying to keep everyone informed about what's going on, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that tonight.
Councilman Mooneyham, and then I'm going to ask Judy, because she wishes to speak. Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff. Scott, to your knowledge, is there any demolition being done within the structure?
I guess the answer would be nothing that requires a permit.
Okay. Just background, and you're very well of this, the longstanding concern with this structure had been asbestos associated with any kind of demolition, hence the question.
They have had a complete study on the whole, on every structure out there done, and it's been signed up by the Selma King Valley Air Pollution Control Board, which are the ones who monitor any asbestos leads and stuff like that. So they've got a, a signature from them, so they have been studied and given a good to go.
Good, thank you.
Mrs. Bowling?
Judy Bowling, 137 Judy Drive, Atwater, California. I still have concerns about the asbestos. That building was built prior to 1950 or right at 1950. There is asbestos wrapped over the rebar. So you say the structure's sturdy to hold this and that, but from the floor, whenever you wrap something in asbestos and then you concrete it, it doesn't go away. It's there unless you take it out. And I don't think there's been any rebar removal of that building. There's a lot of different things, and I don't understand how categorically they're just exempt from all the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act for the existing facilities. We're, we're acquisitioning streets and all of this other stuff. Before we do all those things, shouldn't we really check for the asbestos? Because the rebar's wrapped in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've not read the whole packet, but that's just the beginning comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, Chuck Ware, chief designer on the project. I actually reside in Gilroy, and I was retained by the, the congregation to design this. I will say that the city has tried to aid, the city staff has tried to aid and make this thing go forward. We have had some major challenges. One of the challenges is that we had to do about a $12,000 study, because this is going to be an assembly building, and the, the California Building Code says that if it's assembly, we have to actually look at flood, flood load and snow load. It was about a $12,000 study. The flood is, is for an eight-foot, there's, we'd have flooding loads on the wall at eight feet up. I don't think that's going to happen here. And the snow, we're never going to get enough snow that, that would impact the building significantly, but we have done that. I can categorically say, I have, we have done investigative work, we have exposed the rebar in multiple places. rebar in multiple places. It's not a common building practice at all to wrap rebar in asbestos. It is a common practice to wrap ductwork in asbestos and steel beams for fire protection, but the, it's not a building practice at all to wrap rebar in asbestos. It would defeat the purpose of the rebar. The, I've been designing and building since 1972 and I have never seen rebar wrapped with asbestos. We did have the, in other words, a full study, they spent a day and a half out there looking and examining the building and they did not find any lead, lead paint or asbestos in the building at all. Because it was a concrete building, we didn't have to use fire protection. I will say this here, that the, our liability insurance requires us to do diligence, to do diligent and we can't in clear conscience destroy our firm, destroy it if we try to cut corners. The, we do appreciate, in other words, the state code has a provision for Title 24 exemptions and the building official went ahead to the state and got that granted. And so, concrete by nature is a heat sink and because we have a central valley here, it'll absorb the heat all day long and then radiate it at night, so you can never sit there and ever get caught up because it is a heat sink. So I really appreciate what the cooperation that staff has had and I would like to, maybe if you could just pass this, there's a number of copies here, maybe you can spread it out if there, you can see the staff asked us to have a full landscape scenario and this here represents and it'll, it's going to be an asset for the city when it's all said and done.
Does the council have any questions of Mr. Ware?
I think it's, I think it'd be easiest just to maybe pass one page to a couple of different people. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Judy, did you wish to come?
I think that this could be a good project. I'm not against it. I'm not against it being a church or whatever. I'm still back to the same thing, the floor, the floor, the concrete floor. And back in the 50s, that's what they did, was wrap the rebar in asbestos. The floor. I'm not talking about eight foot up on the walls of water or snow. I'm talking about the flooring. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions in regards to this project? I just wanted to thank the Councilman Joe Rivera.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanna reconfirm that. You said the state agency came in and it's cleared that, the air quality and there's no worry about mold, asbestos.
Yes, they did a full examination of the building and they are the ones who have the authority to disapprove or approve a building. They go in there and do tests and stuff and Mr. Ware made sure that that happened. We've got documentation that it did pass.
Okay. Well, with that, I'm happy to hear that because I know that old buildings do, I mean, Schaefer School, students were exposed to asbestos, they were exposed to toxic mold and not until they got clearance from these other areas where they allowed to bring them back in. So if you say that they're cleared, that's good, that's good for me. I also wanna thank you for your project. I know many people over there that have been disgusted with the building sitting there all those years. It was just decrepit at the time, rat-infested and what you guys are doing is a blessing. Since I was a kid, I wasn't old, I'm not old enough to remember it as a creamery, but I remember it as where they used to do fiberglassing and they even built doom buggies or did repairs there. They had a small engine repair shop there. They had a secondhand store through the whole thing and at no time, it never looked as good as what you're gonna make it, so I really commend you for that. And I think all the neighbors are really appreciative of what you're doing, cleaning it up and so I just wanna thank you for myself about what you're doing. I wanna thank staff for working with this church.
And I also just wanted to mention too, there is a little minimal work going on in the church, so you'll see people in it and what they're doing is plugging the holes where the x-rays were done. And so they're just basically spackling and covering the holes and so they're systematically doing that. So there, you know, you'll see some people there, but it's all volunteers, they're going, they're there as many hours as they can and then sanding them all down, getting ready for paint eventually when it gets to that point. So, and Pastor Juan took me for a tour through the facility the last Tuesday, Pastor Juan? Something like that? Yeah. And so I walked the whole grounds to make sure that, you know, things were as what we'd been told and they were as of last Tuesday. So do you have any other questions?
Yes, sir. You wanna come, okay.
I can speak for one here. The building code does allow us to do maintenance work. We don't have to have a building permit to do maintenance. Put the glazing, the glass back in, that type of stuff. We're allowed to do that without a building permit or without, it's hard to maintain the building.
Mr. Councilman Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is a very extensive project, very time-consuming project. As we've seen, there's a lot of work left to do. Do we have any estimate of time as to when you think this might be complete?
We should get a occupancy permit, additional occupancy, probably sometime in June.
Really?
We aren't gonna, we aren't, the whole building will not be done, but it'll be first September, so be able to meet the assembly requirements and stuff like that and the parking.
Excellent. That's much quicker than I would've expected, but it's good news. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? We'll go ahead and I'll motion to approve the staff's recommendation as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Fall, seconded by Bergman. Any further discussion? Call for the question. Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Hello, abstain.
Mooneyham?
A question, this is just a verbal report, right?
Yeah. Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Is a vote necessary on a verbal report?
Well, it says here in the agenda, so that's why I went with it. So.
No, I understand.
It says the motion to approve the staff's recommendation as presented. So it's either wanna approve of it or?
It's probably, yeah, it's probably confusing for the, we probably should've phrased this as an update item only.
Yeah, probably.
But the recommendation of the staff is that the council receive and accept the verbal report.
Verbal report.
So I suppose that's the motion, but I think we can make this less cumbersome in the future.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Call for the question. Fall? Yes. Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna have a recess, about five minutes. And the next item we have on our agenda is the proposed update on Chapter 17.69, sign code, community director, Mr. McBride.
Thank you again, Mayor and council members. We're very happy to bring this to you tonight for your input. This has been reviewed by the planning commission. What you see here incorporates changes that they made to this proposed code. It's also been through legal review. It took a chant, took a review of it, made sure that sections reflected appropriately where they needed to be, some clarifications and updates throughout. If I kinda characterized what this intent was for this update, there were a lot of sections that didn't apply anymore, they were incorrect. There were three sections, however, that the commission felt very strongly that need to be looked at, 17.69, 320 political signs, 120 prohibited signs and 420 garage cell signs. And so what you have in here are now sections that more or less reflect what's actually occurring in the community. The intent was to get the sign code to reflect the way people have been doing things in the community, what it's kinda deemed as being appropriate or the standard in the community, so those have been added to it. To give you an idea, some of the prohibited signs under 17.69.120, those are on page seven. Some of the, some of the different types of uses of signs that have been expressed as concerns by the commission, other people in the community, human billboards, air dancers, those types of things now are included in here, whereas before they weren't. This is very clear to clarify that they're now prohibited signs or they would be prohibited signs if the ordinance is adopted. And we had to obviously provide definitions, explain what these are. So those would be new additions to the code. Another small change too, on page eight, we have a scenic corridor set up here in general plan, but it was never really articulated in the code as to what that was, so we wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Primarily, the other big issues or big changes were, as I outlined before, in 320, the political signs. And as the council's aware, what you see here is in legislative, so what's written as strikeout text would be deleted and what's listed as underline text would be added or amended to it. This more or less captures what you're seeing every time there's a campaign or election in the community. Actually, our code only allowed for one sign per property, you know, multiple properties, including commercial properties had multiple signs. So we're trying to be responsible to what's actually occurring in the community with the proposed updates. I'd be more than happy to answer the questions the council may have. Kind of the purpose of giving you this is to allow you to give some feedback to us and the commission. If you're comfortable with what you see here, we will start what's called the ZODA process, the text amendment process. We'll have to set a hearing for the planning commission, they'll review it, they'll have a public hearing and they'll make a recommendation either for or against the proposed changes and then it would be coming back to you as an ordinance. We'd have to do another public hearing. It'd be just like other ones you had tonight, introduction and then coming back for a second reading before it's adopted. So really, the purpose tonight is to bring the council back up to date on all the different issues that were asked to be looked at, the changes that were made and to get your feedback. If there's changes that you want us to work on, now's the time, we can do that. If you're comfortable with what you have here, we can start the formal process and get it back through for approval.
Council persons, do we have any questions or concerns or would you prefer to read this and then bring it back on December 19th and start the process then? Now's the time to, I think this, maybe I'm incorrect, but I think this is the first time that the council has seen this in this form.
That could be. This is the entirety of the ordinance. Instead of just breaking out each section and showing you like a paraphrasing of the section, we wanna have the whole ordinance with all the proposed changes to you. I know that the sign ordinance has been to the city council at different occasions for different sections, but this incorporates all the changes that were made the last few years for religious signs, for institutional signs, so those are already incorporated and this is, would be more or less the final update to any of those things.
But it's feeling of the council. Mr. Bergman, Councilman Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. Personally, I would like, this is a lot of information to absorb. I would like a couple of weeks to thoroughly review this and have it brought back to our next meeting, which would be December 9th, to discuss.
And then maybe if you have questions during that time that you can give them to Scott so that he can kind of answer them where he can and so that we'll be prepared on the 9th to move on to the next stage?
And Mayor, just so I wanna make sure I'm very clear, what you would be doing is basically telling the planning commission to go and start the approval process of the text movement. You wouldn't start here with a public hearing, you're giving input on it and it has to go to the commission to start the process. And you would get it back after they've done the hearing, done their part of the process and then you'd have the ordinance process starting here. So you'd have at least two different occasions when it's formally being approved to also work on it at that point.
Okay. Councilman Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, I would like the commission to further examine Section 17.69.320, specifically Section A regarding residential zones for political signs. One of the standard size political signs you have is a four-by-four. As long as it adheres to the other requirements as far as visibility and as long as it falls into all the other constraints, I would like them to consider the four-by-four, which would be not to exceed 16 square feet for discussion and presentation to the council. Thank you.
Councilman Bergman?
Thank you, Mayor. Rather than go back and forth with one item at a time, I think it would be prudent to give us an opportunity to review the whole thing and come back in the next meeting and make our recommendation to the commission at that time rather than do one at a time. So what I'd like to do is just give us, you know, give us the two weeks rather than go back like this. Go back, come back to the next meeting, give us an opportunity to digest this and then we make our recommendations to the planning commission at that time.
And I'm fine with that. I just knew that the planning commission was meeting tomorrow and if Mr. McBride could start to plant that specific seed, I would appreciate it.
I think the problem with that though, Councilman, is their agenda is already set and I don't think anything can be added at this time, this late, late time for their, so.
So, Mr. Bergman, is that a motion for you?
I'll make that a motion, yes.
Motion to?
A second, a motion.
Okay. That we will move this item to December 14th, December 9th after we have reviewed everything and be ready to give our suggestions and our concerns to the, Mr. McBride and then to ask him if they, we have any concerns so that he has the opportunity to answer the questions before the meeting? Is that basically where we're at?
Sounds correct.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bergman, Councilman Bergman, a second by Mr. Jeff Rivera to extend the sign ordinance, the review of the sign ordinance by the council to December 9th. Is that okay, city attorney?
It is.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the question. Bergman?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Fall?
Yes.
Motion carries. I just wanted to compliment the people on putting this sign ordinance together. It, they did a very nice job. I haven't seen this sign ordinance put together quite like this in a long time and so I know that it's a real hassle to put it together, but I think that this is a nice, clear start and so thank you very much. Okay. Next item on our agenda is verbal, no, week 14, we have moved to December 9th, is that correct?
No, it's referred to the Planning Commission.
Oh, it's referred to the Planning Commission, okay. So, so we're on 15th. And the verbal review of the Fire Department activities and projects for the month of October 2013, Battalion Chief Pimentel.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, citizens of Atwater, Atwater Fire Department, this month of October has run six structure fires, 21 other fires, 13 vehicle accidents, 189 medical aids, hazardous condition hazmats, nine, and public service assists, 16, which brings a total of 254 calls. Also, we were diligently working with the schools to do our education. Station 41 and 42 have conducted four education, public education events, and then also conducted 25, 24 business inspections. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Is this a high rate of fires this time, or is it just kind of comes in streaks?
This is kind of about average. We're a little bit, a little bit higher than usual with the fires. Our medical aids are a little bit down this, this month, but we're, we're about there, give or take about 20 or 30 calls.
Any questions of Chief Pimentel?
Thank you very much.
We thank you very much, Chief. Next person is item 16, verbal review of the Police Department activities and projects for the month of October 2013.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, member of the council. This is for the October 2013. A few things that occurred, I noted, officers were called to 1700 Block of Sycamore Avenue regarding a female on the ground. She was a victim of an assault. They found her on the ground bleeding from the forehead. She was treated medically. The detectives do have an, who the suspect is, and they're currently searching for him. We also had an incident where a suspect was tased during an investigation, in which suspect was charged an officer in aggressive matter during a felony accident investigation. Suspect was then tased and subsequently arrested in Bookton County Jail. Calls for service for the month, we had 2,200. We had thefts, 67, seven stolen vehicles. We had no murders, two rapes, and 16 assaults at this time. And then the investigation regarding the sewer treatment plant on the county portion of it, I contacted detectives right now to get an update and stuff, and then no one seems to have kind of, there, no contact back, I haven't got a contact back yet, so I'm not really sure, so waiting for it.
Which burglary you're talking about, the new plant or the old plant?
The old plant.
The old plant. We've had several burglaries, we've made several arrests. The last arrest we made was a homeless gentleman that camped out on Burt Crane in Atwater.
And that was, that was two, that was a month and a half, two months ago.
Right. And we got, and we got a lot of the metal property back. That was the last arrest we made.
Well, I thought you meant the new one out in the county and stuff, that's why we're trying to figure out, we're doing some research.
They're talking about the old wastewater.
But the old one, the only one, last one we had was the one the chief is explaining, the suspect, and that's the one I addressed in one of the meetings regarding him being placed under arrest, caught on, on scene, the officers had to take him down, they found, and that car, the car was also reported stolen. That was the one I reported to you, I think it was like a month, two months ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all I got.
Any other questions of Lieutenant Joseph? We just want to thank you very much, and thank your group of officers for their outstanding service. We really appreciate it. And the young, the people that are going out and talking with the, your Nevesky and, and Officer Brooklyn going out to visit with the Girl Scouts and things like that, that's great community relations, and they need to be commended for that.
You gotta thank the chief for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one is item number 17, verbal report on commission vacancies. City Clerk Durrell.
Available commission vacancies include Planning Commission, one unscheduled vacancy, term ending December 2016; one scheduled vacancy, term ending December 2017; Parks and Recreation Commission, one scheduled vacancy, term ending December 2017; Traffic Commission, one unscheduled vacancy, term ending December 2015; one scheduled vacancy, term ending December 2017. If you're a qualified elector, and you live within the city limits, and you are interested in serving on a commission, you can get an application from the city's website or here at City Hall. The application deadline is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, 2014. The notice of the vacancies is posted on the city's website, it will be in the utility newsletter, and it will be also advertised in the Atwater Signal on November 16th and December 14th. Right now, we are tentatively scheduled, the interviews to be held on Monday, January 13th, beginning at 4:30 PM. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Can we begin, I thought we were going to begin those at 4:00?
We can do that.
Okay. However, we're just, now, let me ask you another question now, the qualifications, again? What, do you have to be a resident?
You have to be a qualified elector, and you have to reside within the city limits.
Qualified elector means that you voted?
Registered to vote.
Registered to vote, okay. And you have to live within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing...
We want, you want to start at 4:00, the interviews?
Is it, council, is it all right if we can start at 4:00 with the interviews? Then that way we can be done and move on to our closed session, and then be ready to start the council at 6:00, is that okay? Okay, consensus, we'll go ahead and start at 4:00 then.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our business is City Council matters, appointment of the city representative on the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. We have, at the present time, we have Chuck Bolch has been serving as our city, City of Atwater representative on the Merced County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. And so his, he, we've checked with Chuck, and he's, well, he would like to continue to serve on that, in that status for another four years. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to, to appoint Mr. Chuck Bolch as the City of Atwater's representative on the mosquito board.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr., second, motion by Paul, seconded by Bergman, and we have a question by Jeff, from Jeff Rivera.
So I was going to ask, does the city advertise for applicants for this, or?
We have...
Do we have an ordinance that requires us to do that, or?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe it might be something that the county does, because they notified us that the term was up, and in the past, like four years ago, they did the same, they sent us a letter stating that the candidate was willing to do another term. As far as I know, we've never advertised that. It might be something they do.
Because I, personally, I believe we should open this up to allow people to apply for it, otherwise it just keeps getting handed down to the same person, which I don't have a problem with Mr. Bolch, but I think for, to be open in, to the public, and for the public to understand that positions are open, I would think that we should, should advertise for, for these positions, just like what we do for the Planning Commission and Parks and Rec and, and the others.
We can, we will, I want to turn this over to the City Attorney to take a look at. We have, this has been a position that has not been operated from, from our, from my appointment of committee members like we do and other things. So I think we're going to have to look into it and see exactly what the bylaws are, and what the, and how they go, how they go about doing it. But I think for now, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second to, to appoint Mr. Chuck Bolch for another four years. And in the meantime, we can go ahead and see what the, the background that they use to appoint people. Mr. Joe Rivera?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion, to go ahead and approve of Mr. Bolch after it comes back to us with the bylaws and a little more information about advertising it. Now, I know that, in fact, I was here when Mr. Bolch was first placed on many, many, many years ago, and there was a kind of a political row that came about at the time, and so I, and I voted for Mr. Bolch back then, but to just, this is an appointee of the city, and so we should have it advertised, let people know what this position is, and what, what they actually do, and that they really are held responsible in some aspects to the city. And, and it would be, one other thing, too, is one other point, it would be nice to have the, the individual here that we're going to support for any questions that might come up from the citizens. Now, there was two questions that I've had from, there was one lady who was not very happy. She was walking down the street, and one of those big trucks was spraying, and she was trying to make it, she was kind of elderly, and she was trying to make it out of the way, and she didn't quite make it, and so she was not very happy with, with that, and I, I think there's some, some questions we have for the citizens, too, about, and I know it's advertised, but I'm not sure if it's advertised well enough to let people know when it's coming down a certain street, you better not be walking.
You mean, you mean the spraying?
Yeah, the spraying. And I know they do advertise a little bit here and there, but for, for most people, I don't think they see that, and, and that was one issue, there was something else that came up with some other people, too. So I just think it would be nice to have the representative here maybe to even answer a few questions.
We did invite him to come.
Okay.
Yes. I, I'm, I'm not sure, I think this also is a county appointment, and I'm not really sure about how it works, but we've just, but I will be more than glad to look into it and talk to Mr. Hinman, but I think now they need to have, because this position is going to be open, ended on the 31st of December, so 27th, that's when his term is up. So I think for now, we need to just go ahead and place him in there, and then meanwhile, we can find out exactly what's going on, but we do need to fill this position. So I have a motion on the floor by Mr. ...
There's, there's an amended motion, too, about...
That was...
Okay. To vote for this after we're informed with the issues that we wanted to bring back, and, and I realize that his term is up in December, and so are a lot of our other committee members are going to be up in December, so there's still time along with, along those lines to interview for the other committees that we have, and then also any questions we might have, or citizens might have about, about this position, that they can be answered prior to the appointment. And I think that where time still allows that, since we still have time for our own other positions.
I think that, well, the amended, I don't understand about that because of the fact that I made the motion, and Mr. Bergman seconded it, and so I don't understand where your amendment comes in unless we approve of, accept your amendment.
Well, that's, that's...
That's what...
That's what he's asking.
Yeah.
I think the request, the request of Mr. Rivera is that the maker of the motion consent to amending her motion, and the maker of the second consent to amending the second to incorporate that. Exactly. It's fundamentally a different motion, to be quite honest, really, really what the council ought to do is vote on the motion, unless the mayor wishes to accept the amendment. If she does not, then she can call for the question as presented in her motion, and if it passes, it passes. So I'll, I'll limit my answer to that at this point. I mean, I do have some ideas in terms of some of the other questions that you raised, as to how these appointments work, but we can talk about that separately.
Okay. Mr. Bergman?
If, if, if the maker of the motion doesn't consent to amending her motion, the, whether the person who offered the second consents or not really doesn't matter, because in the first instance, it would be up to the person who makes the motion, so.
I call for the question. I call for the question.
Joe Rivera?
No.
Bergman?
No.
Mooneyham?
No.
Jeff Rivera?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. So let's start again.
I'd like to make a motion to bring it back with, with more information that was requested here.
Bring it back.
For the, our next meeting, in which we will have an appointment then. And I also would like to know, too, more about this appointment process, and if it is, if the general public could be aware of, you know, that this is even open, because besides, right here at this meeting, I don't think many people know that this position exists, and if there's some way we can, you know, let people know, and it'll be discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion is that we move to, to make this appointment part of the, as a part of our normal committee selection, is that, I'm sorry?
If I can clarify...
Yes, please clarify, I'm getting down.
What I think Councilmember Rivera is suggesting is that we bring this back on December 9th, just as it is here, but with additional information as to how the county advertises, if the county advertises the position, and what the council's role is with this commission, this district, because it is a county district.
Yeah, it is.
It's not a city commission, and so your normal process for interviewing candidates wouldn't apply to this.
Right.
You would be, you're asked under their, under their guidelines to make an appointment, and your question is, how does the public know about their opportunity to potentially be appointed? If Merced County operates like San Joaquin and St. Anisaw counties, typically it is advertised at the county offices by the county clerk that that position is coming available, and people can express interest, and make their interest known to the City Council. So we, but we'll check into that and find out exactly how it works here in Merced County, and make sure it's been adequately advertised, and then the council can make a decision as to whether to reappoint Mr. Bolch, or whether to ask for other candidates.
So we have a...
You can do all of that on December 9th, because his term doesn't expire until the 31st.
Right. So we can take care of that then. Okay. So is that, is that motion agreeable by, by yourself, Mr. Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Bergman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that's what we will, then we'll call for the, call for the question.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Joe Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is City Council comments and requests for future agenda items, and we're going to start with Mr. Councilman Bergman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was approached by one of our civic organizations, they were inquiring about the possibility of taking a tour of our water treatment plant out on Burt Crane. Is that a possibility to set up?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just give me the name, and I'll set it up with our Public Works Director.
Perfect. Okay, I will let them know. And a second, sadly, I'd like to request that we adjourn the meeting tonight in the name of two individuals, Mr. Bob Wells and Ms. Dido Krotik. Mr. Wells passed away a few weeks ago. He was very, very active in one of our civic organizations that did a lot of good for our community, and he and his wife, Lois, both are very active, and I'd like to send our sympathies to the family of Bob, and as well as Ms. Krotik, she passed away yesterday. I think everybody here knows Dido and the, and what she's done for this community over the years, and I'd like to send our sympathies to their children, Andy Bart and Joanna.
Thank you. I agree with that. Okay, we're moving on to Councilman Joe Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, would like to echo my condolences to the Krotik family. I know this is, it's always tough when you have a family member pass away, and this is a tough time of year to have that happen. I've seen it myself, so my condolences go out to all of you. And with that, I want to wish everyone out in our community a warm and wonderful Thanksgiving with your family and friends. Enjoy it, enjoy your family, enjoy your friends.
Thank you. Councilman Jeff Rivera?
At our veterans' memorial celebration, a veteran gave me a poem and asked me to read it, and I told him I would. When America had an urgent need, these brave ones raised a hand. No hesitation held them back. They were proud to take a stand. They left their friends and family. They gave up normal life to serve their country and their God. They fought for freedom and for peace on strange and foreign soils. Some lost new friends, some lost their lives in a long and brutal war. Other veterans answered the call to support the ones who fought. Their country had requirements for the essential skills they brought. We salute every one of them, the noble and the brave, the ones still with us here today, and those who rest in a grave. So here's to our country's heroes, they're a cut above the rest. Let's give them honor that is due. Let's give them honor that is due to our country's very best." I'd also like to echo condolences out to the Krotik family and also to the Wells. I know Mr. Wells was in the Kiwanis Group that I'm also part of, and I would like to wish Mr. Mooneyham a quick recovery, and our prayers are with you. And also to thank all the staff members that were involved in the memorial event, if you would mind passing on, that we really appreciate their hard work. They did a wonderful job, and it was a very nice event because of their hard work. And also to thank everybody for their support in the city of Atwater, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Mr. Jeff Rivero, could you put that poem, or give that poem to Mrs. Del Real so we can put it with our collection? And thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Mooneyham? Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to follow up on the requests from the last meeting of the city council to ask the city attorney to continue to work with the chief, Mark Pimentel, regarding the max height limitations of our, some of our commercial projects, and bring that back for the December meeting. And I'd already discussed that with the city attorney, just as a reminder. Also, youth basketball signups. I noticed that it looks like November was the day for, the month for youth basketball. Is that currently going on, signups?
Currently, I don't think so.
Okay. I know it had been approached by a couple of people. They knew November was the timeframe, but just didn't know when, so please see our Parks and Rec Department about that. And just to echo the sentiments, I had the privilege of working with Dido Krotik and her son, Andy, for several years. Truly a wonderful individual, never heard a negative word about the woman, very, very kind, and I know her family is going to miss her very deeply, and I just want to echo the sentiments of the council that you will be missed, and our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to send my, our council, from the council and from the city, to the prayers, to the families, the Krotik family and the Wells family on, during this time of sorrow and their, it's really, they, both of these individuals have really made a mark in the city of Atwater, and we want to thank their families very, very much for all that they have contributed to our community, and we really want to thank them. And so we're going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Dido Krotik and of Robert Wells Senior for their wonderful contribution to our community. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I want to thank everybody who helped yesterday in our Veterans Day program. It was outstanding. I want to thank the staff and everyone. It was just a job well done. We all worked together, and it turned out beautifully. So with that, the meeting will be adjourned in honor of Mrs. Krotik and Robert Wells.